Okay, aloha nui klaa ko. Aloha ma ka ko, enaho ma ka maka mai kala hiki akala akao. Velina nui meke aloha, ma la nui no kea, ako ako ana, okako, nokapono okalau. La hui, nokapono okaaina, onokapona okavai no ho'i. Ehe, olalano ea, e kala layana ke koi koi, okavai mekaaina. Olakaaina, olake kanata. When the land lives, the people thrive. Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, May 28th Board Meeting. We have a, of the Honolulu Board of Water Supply, we have a packed agenda today. So I thank everyone for being here and for being concise. Before we begin today's meeting, I'd like to state that our board is dedicated to providing safe, dependable, and an affordable supply of water now and into the future. At this time, we would like to share a brief recording with reminders on public participation, as well as virtual meeting regulations for the board members as required by law.
Materials for this meeting under HRS Section 92-7.5 are accessible at boardofwatersupply.com/BoardMeetings. The public may attend this meeting in person at the BWS Public Service Building, located at 630 South Baritania Street. The public may also view a live stream of today's meeting on our website at boardofwatersupply.com/live. We have been accepting written or oral testimony for today's meeting. Instructions and an online submittal form are available at boardofwatersupply.com/testimony. The deadline to submit advanced written testimony has passed. Testimony received by noon today have been distributed to the board members. We will continue to accept written testimony today through our online form. Oral testimony in person or remotely will be accepted during today's meeting. To facilitate as much in-person and remote testimony as reasonably possible during the time allotted, pre-registration and submittal of a written version of testimony at boardofwatersupply.com/testimony is strongly encouraged. To testify in person, please register using our online form or come to the Public Service Building at 630 South Baritania Street. We have a representative in the lobby to provide intake and further instructions. To request to testify remotely, please complete the online form at boardofwatersupply.com/testimony. Requesters will receive an email containing links and instructions to join the Zoom session. Testifiers will have two minutes to state their position. A timekeeper will alert testifiers when there is one minute remaining. Once the two minutes are up, please summarize to allow time for questions from the board, then make room for the next testifier. Board members attending any board meeting remotely must be visible to the public to be considered present and meet quorum guidelines. Board members participating remotely must also disclose their location and anyone present at their location during roll call. Meeting participants who are calling or videoconferencing in, please mute your microphone when you're not speaking. If you have a question, comment, or wish to enter or second a motion on an action item, please unmute your microphone and identify yourself before continuing to speak. If you encounter technical issues during today's meeting, please use the Zoom chat to send a direct message to our support team. Their names are listed in the message to all participants. To open the chat window, please click on the text bubble icon on the Zoom toolbar.
All right, I feel like that video keeps getting longer and longer with all the rules and procedures. Thank you, Wayne. It's better than me reading it. Let's take a moment to take roll call with the board members. When I call your name, please say aye. And if attending remotely, make the appropriate disclosures. I will start with Vice Chair Kapus Pro. Aloha.
Aloha na'olehu and all. I'm present and I'm appearing remotely from my home office where I'm alone with the door closed. Mahalo.
Board Member Jean Avano.
Present, good morning, good afternoon, everyone. I am in my work office alone.
Aloha, Jean. It looks like Ed Snifford is going to be a little late and Brian and Di is excused. In joining us in the boardroom today, we have Jonathan Conisher.
Here.
Aloha, John. Also in the room with us today, Manager Ernie Lau.
Aloha.
Deputy Manager Erwin Koata.
Here.
Aloha. Board Secretary Joy Cruz Achu.
Here.
Manager Secretary Kimberly Kuhai. Information Specialists Wayne Maria and Kyoni Matos. Matos. Aloha. Joining us by Zoom, Jeff Lau and Jessica Wong, both from the city and county of Court Council. Okay. First thing up, we have a public hearing. The Honolulu Board of Water Supply's public hearing was published in the Friday, May 17th, 2024. Sorry, advertiser, the purpose of the public hearing is to allow the public the opportunity to testify on the proposed fiscal year 2024-2025 operating and capital improvement budget for the Board of Water Supply. Chair recognizes Rilin Nakabayashi and Patrick Chun. Aloha.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, members. Our fiscal year 2025 budgets are proposed at $272,619,998 for the operating budget, which represents a 12.8% increase over the prior FY24 adopted budget. And our capital improvement program budget is recommended at $310,291,000, which is a 38.58% increase over the prior year's adopted budget. With regards to the operating budget though, as the board may recall, our fiscal year 24 operating budget was extremely lean and it was essentially flat, less than a percent increase over our fiscal year 23 budget due to our limited revenue available prior to our adopted rate increases. So while a 12.8% increase may seem large, this fiscal year 25 operating budget is essentially catching up after two years of holding expenditures flat in the face of increased inflation. With regards though to the 38.58% increase in the capital improvement program budget, $51.25 million of that $86.4 million increase are projects that are actually being deferred from fiscal year 24. So while we work hard to execute on all of the projects budgeted, there are factors outside of our immediate control, such as planning, permitting, and other approvals that can delay the solicitation and award of projects. But the projects noted above with the red arrows are actually being strategically delayed to allow BWS time to seek state revolving fund or SRF funding, where the BWS is actively seeking external financing to finance CIP projects in fiscal year 25. The bipartisan infrastructure law, or BIL, increased funds available to water utilities through the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund loan programs. The state of Hawaii Department of Health manages the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund loan program, which is traditionally a low-interest loan program. The increase in funding though from the BIL has allowed the state DOH to include loan forgiveness in some of their loan agreements for a wide range of drinking water projects, including upgrades to water treatment plants, water distribution and piping systems, PFOS treatment and lead pipe replacement if necessary. We have determined the three projects here that you see on the screen with the red arrows are projects that meet the eligibility criteria for SRF funding and therefore we are differing them strategically to fiscal year 25 to give us time to seek and obtain this funding. Presented here are fiscal years 21 through 25 operating and CIP budgets. So the operating budgets are the yellow bar on the chart. And as you can see, they have consistently grown due to increases in personnel costs, material supplies and services, and additional debt service costs from our bond issuances. The increase in fiscal year 25 is primarily due to increases in personnel costs driven by collective bargaining and an effort to fill our vacant positions. Further in this presentation, I will cover increases in each of their cost category. Our CIP budgets, which are the dark blue or the navy colored column on the bar chart, they have also steadily increased as we continually work to invest in repairing, replacing, and maintaining our existing infrastructure and as we contend with Red Hill. The proposed operating budget is based on total operating fund resources of $365.2 million. The operating fund resources are made up of our beginning fund balance plus any revenues anticipated to be earned, plus any prior year lapses or adjustments. We've been working diligently to maintain safe and reliable service in the face of increased inflationary pressures and the Red Hill crisis. Unfortunately, inflation outpaced our prior rates, effectively reducing carryover year over year. Carryover or that beginning fund balance is simply the unbudgeted and unreserved cash amount remaining at the end of each fiscal year. Thankfully though, with the board's support, we were able to adopt rate increases in November of 2023, which became effective on February 1st, 2024. While these rate increases were much needed, as the board may recall, to avoid rate shop for our customers, we deliberately limited rate increases to no more than 10% in any fiscal year, understanding though that this would mean a gradual rebuilding of our diminished fund balance or carryover. The FY25 budget reflects the increase in expenses, sorry, we have all faced and a strategic use of the operating fund at a time when borrowing is more expensive. The result is a projected fund balance or carryover into the future of only $24.1 million. This side illustrates our total resources versus our total expenditures, with resources being the column to the left made up of blue, which are the revenues, green which is that fund balance or carryover we talked about previously, and orange which are the lapses or adjustments from prior years. Expenditures for each year are in the purple column to the right. Fiscal years 22 and 23 are represented on the screen as actuals. 24 and 25 are the budgeted amounts. So as we talked about on the prior slide, we're working to rebuild our operating fund balance, but we'll continue putting the operating fund balance to work to ensure continued operations and investment into our water system when, at a time when borrowing is more expensive. So the board did adopt financial policies for the BWS to follow. One of our financial policies is debt service coverage. So per the policy, we are to maintain 1.6x debt service coverage. At the close of fiscal year 23 or the audited financial statements from June 2023, we're at 3.46x on senior debt and 2.58x all in. The other financial policy set by the board was our working capital. So the board set a target for us of 180 days of unencumbered working capital while never having less than 60 days. So as of the close of June 30, 2023, we had the equivalent of 144 days. So debt service coverage ratio is just a measure of cash flow available to pay your current debt obligations. It's a key measure of your ability to repay loans and take on new debt financing. It's essentially net operating income divided by debt service. So our net operating income, of course, is just our revenue minus our expenses. And debt service is the total of all existing debts owed in that same period, including both interest and principal. So our indenture requirement or what we promise essentially to our bondholders is for debt service coverage of 1.2. As we covered on the prior slide, the board's goal for us is at least 1.6 for our financial policies at 1.6. This is our projected debt service coverage through this rate setting cycle. So we've got rates adopted through fiscal year 28. And this is a projected debt service coverage with those rates. And our planned CIP as of January. And as the board may recall from Poliko's presentation a few months ago, when we talked about our bond issuance, our bond rating has been historically high and we received confirmation of our AAA stable ratings in February 2024 this year. This is just another way to present to you folks the operating fund expenditures. So our total operating fund budget in fiscal year 25 is $341.1 million. And it's made up of 88.3 million or 26% for material supplies and services, 71.8 million for fixed charges and debt service, I'm sorry, yeah, for fixed charges. And then debt service is at 42.49 million. There's also $64.2 million for personnel services and $68.46 million for operating funds or our rate revenue cash to be used in the capital improvement program budget. And then finally, a small $5.9 million for equipment. This side presents the operating fund expenditures from fiscal years 21 through 25. As we continue to grow our CIP, we'll continue the mix of financing between both bonds and operating funds. This is reflected most clearly, or I guess visually here on this slide, as the growth in that debt service or that blue category, as you can see, over time that will continue to grow. And as current interest rates to borrow are currently, right now, higher than they have been in previous years, this fiscal year 25 budget, as seen in that gray bar of the bar chart, or the gray part of that bar chart, we're making a strategic decision or a conscious decision to utilize operating funds or cash and alternative financing. And we'll get into that a little bit later. But that's to continue the necessary growth in the CIP though while balancing costs to our ratepayers. So if we remove the CIP component of what we spend our operating funds or cash on, and we just look at operating budget to operating budget year over year, there's 12.8% more being requested to be budgeted in fiscal year 25 than was budgeted in fiscal year 24. And it's primarily again due to, there's a $10.3 million increase if you look at the personnel services or that green category. There is a $7.8 million increase in fixed charges if you just look at the purple to purple. $5.4 million increase in material supplies and services and a $4.3 million increase in debt service. So I'll cover each of these categories now in more detail. So as far as salaries or personnel costs, the Board of Watch guys not requesting for the board an increase in the authorized headcount. This board authorized 741 FTE a few years ago, before my time even, but we've kept it at that. We're not asking for new positions. There is a $10.3 million increase, which represents 19.1% though over prior years. And that is reflective not only of negotiated collective bargaining salary adjustments, but it's also a focus on funding positions that are actively being recruited in fiscal year 25. We continue to evaluate organizational and technological changes to increase and optimize our operational capacity. And we've initiated changes in our recruitment and advertisement of our vacant positions by leveraging memberships in professional organizations like the AWWA and AMWA. We've been working with marketing to try to develop a more robust advertising plan for all of our positions. And we're also working with the Department of Human Resources to expedite the hiring of licensed engineers. The Board of Waterside supports Mayor Blangiardi and his goal to fill as many positions in the city as quickly as possible. So our funding of these positions and our efforts to fill them quickly are aligned with the city's goals. This was reported to the board last month by Michelle in our Human Resources Office, but there is approximately 38% of our workforce which is eligible or will become eligible at least to retire within the next 10 years. We understand the seriousness of this number compounded with our existing vacancies. So in an effort to reach wider audience with our recruitments, we continue to invest time and resources into reaching potential candidates. We continue to engage college students with internship opportunities and leverage all modes of media to promote our recruitments. We're constantly on the pursuit of people who are interested and in search of a fulfilling career providing one of the most critical and essential needs of our community. And moving into the material supplies and services category of the budget or cost category, this cost category saw a $5.2 million increase or 6.3%. And this is primarily due to increases in funding for other contractual services. And this includes increased testing or water quality testing for PFOS and for fuels and increased costs for grounds and tree trimming work at our regulated dams. When it comes to the cost category for equipment, there is a $3.3 million increase and that's essentially just attributable to the purchase of new and replacement fleet vehicles and heavy equipment. Our debt service category has gone up by 4.3 million or 11.2%. And again, this category will continue to increase as we issue more bonds or take on more debt to cover our increased CIP costs. And while we have been issuing more debt, we've been able to achieve essentially top-tier financial ratings, which helps to bring the cost of that debt to our ratepayers down. When it comes to the fixed charges cost category, that has gone up by 7.8 million or 12.3%. And this is primarily due to a $7 million increase in the budget. And this is a one-time increase that we've put in as for an anticipated payment on temporary hazard pay related to the COVID-19 pandemic. So hazard pay payments are made pursuant to collective bargaining agreements and are likely to be determined in this next year by settlement and our arbitration. Moving on to the revenue side, our total revenues are projected to increase by about $36.1 million or 13.7%. Meter water revenues are our primary source of revenue and that's projected to increase by about $35 million or 14.1%. And that is due to the rate adjustment that will become effective on July 1st. This one follows the one that became effective on February 1st. Our recycled water revenues are projected to decrease slightly by $600,000 or 9.1%. And that's just based on our current customers' usage of that recycled water. Comparing past year's budgets and past year's actual revenues, the metered sales is where most of our revenue comes from. So that's the one, it's going up by 14.1%. Recycled water projected to slightly go down. Other revenues will be increasing. Those are primarily, it's primarily things like interest income or installation type revenues. But a small compared to our metered sales. So this is a just stacked bar chart showing the budget versus actual for fiscal year 22 revenues and fiscal year 23. Our fiscal year 24 budgeted revenues and our fiscal year 25 budgeted revenues. So as you can see, the blue is potable, non-potable metered sales and that is primarily where all of our revenue comes from. And our forecasted revenues for fiscal year 25 are just based on historically what we've seen in rate revenues plus the rate increases. While our operating fund revenues are projected to increase by 13.7%, our operating fund expenditures are also projected to go up by 12.8%. Moving in just slightly, teeing up the capital improvement program budget, this slide shows the capital improvement program budget in fiscal year 25. It shows the various types of funding that are being proposed in the CIP. It includes, like we mentioned before, the operating fund or our cash at $68.46 million of operating funds. We're also budgeting 11.8 million or requesting to be budgeted 11.8 million in state revolving fund monies. 7.1 million in our special expendable fund, which are essentially our collections, or that fund holds the collections of water systems facility charges that have been charged and that is where they're deposited. And that special expendable fund is primarily to fund system expansion. Then we are requesting to be budgeted 48.3 million in improvement or bond funds. And then in extramural funds, we're requesting 20 million be budgeted. Extramural fund just represents funding that comes via the BWS via outside agency by agreement. So it's kind of your limited purpose monies. And then finally, this is the new one. It's our Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act. It's going to be our WIFIA fund. And this is another low-interest loan program. That's quite a bit, but essentially, before I hand it off to Pat, I wanted to just say while it is the largest CIP proposed by the BWS to the board to date, it reflects our continuing and growing need to invest in our infrastructure. While our CIP is growing, we remain conscious of the cost of this to our ratepayers and we're making significant efforts to diversify our funding streams. So funding diversification represented in the fiscal year 25 CIP. There are two projects for which we've requested congressionally directed spending, which is formerly known as earmarks, wherein Congress can specifically earmark or put aside money for projects for agencies. We've requested $2 million each for Manana Wells Control Valve Installation and our Ka'aku Manu Wells Control Valve Renovation Project. We're also looking for low-interest financing. There's $111.8 million in state revolving fund loan financing that is being requested of the state. And also, we are working to finalize a loan agreement directly with the EPA under their WIFIA or Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act. And finally, of course, we continue to seek grant funds and we've put in a grant application with the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation for $19 million. Here, I'll hand the presentation over to Pat for details of the CIP.
Thank you, Ray, and good afternoon, Chair Na'olehu and board members. I'm Patrick Chun and I'm the Acting Program Administrator for Capital Projects Division. The Capital Improvements Program, or CIP, ensures that BWS will be able to achieve BWS's vision and mission, water for life, safe, dependable, and affordable water now and into the future. The program includes projects from various divisions within BWS, including Capital Projects Division. The CIP not only supports BWS's vision and missions, but it's also aligned with BWS's Water Master Plan, Strategic Plan, BWS's goals and objectives, and the six-year Capital Projects Improvement Program. The CIP carefully balances the needs of the system in providing safe, reliable water service with cost-effective management of assets and funding. The CIP is comprised of three project categories: research and development, renewal and replacement, and capacity expansion. I will review some of the projects in each category. BWS's water system requires constant replacement and upgrade work. This map shows the approximate location of where the new design and construction projects for FY25 are located. Red indicates design and blue indicates construction projects. For Category 1, Research and Development, we have budgeted $24.4 million. On this slide, I have highlighted projects in this category. The first is the construction of up to three monitoring wells to be used as sentinel wells, allowing BWS to detect the presence of an underground plume, underground fuel plume from Red Hill. The second are for two planning and engineering projects, or PNE, for the design of exploratory wells to determine if the sites are suitable for constructing production wells. The third is for continuing investigation of emerging contaminants in our groundwater such as PFOS and other chemicals using engineering consultants. The photo is of a typical drilling rig. Category 2 is for reconstruction and replacement of various facilities and infrastructure with a budget of $132.9 million. Similar to the previous slide, I have not listed all projects, just a sample of typical types of projects. We intend to bid out a construction project at Hualabuster Number 2 to install electrical upgrades. These upgrades typically include motor control center or MCC replacement, new power and control wiring replacement for pump motors and control devices, interior and exterior control building lighting replacement, and replacement of general use power receptacles. These types of projects may also include pump and motor replacement if water system operations determines the equipment needs replacement. The Ke'olo Hills Water System Improvement is a typical waterline replacement project involving replacement of aging water mains and fire hydrants. The project meets the latest BWS water system standards, including cathodic protection to prevent premature corrosion and insulation of fire hydrants that meet the 350-feet separation distance requirement and other placement criteria. In FY25, we'll be starting the design for the replacement of the MCC at Hualai Eki Booster Number 3. At all our pumping stations, whether well or booster, there is an MCC, which basically consists of various electrical power and control signal sections. The first is the incoming geoelectrical service, including hardware for geometering, the main circuit breaker for all electrical power, a section for transforming geoelectric voltage, typically 40 volts to 120 volts, for controls and general building power for lighting, miscellaneous equipment, and receptacles, sections for pump motor controls, a section for telemetry hardware for the communications, a control with BWS Baritani Control Center. a control with B W S's Veritendi Control Center, and a gauge board that displays system information such as station floor rate, system discharge pressure, station suction pressure and reservoir level. The photos are of a typical booster pump station, a reservoir and an M C C that is thirty plus years old. Category three is for capacity expansion, which has a budget of one hundred sixteen million. These projects include construction of additional well at Maokua Wells, construction of a new three million gallon reservoir at East Kapole for recycled water, construction of the new desalination facility in Kalailoa, the design for a new well at Monoa Well Two, and the design for a new redundant forty-two inch main from Liliha to Waileiili. The photos are of Maokua Wells site control building and an aerial view showing the location of the new Kalailoa Desalination Facility. Now I'm going to turn it back to Ray who will continue with the F Y twenty five budget summary.
Okay, so this slide summarizes our request for fiscal year twenty five operating budget of two hundred seventy-two million, six hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and a requested C I P budget of three hundred and ten million, two hundred ninety-one thousand dollars. Our fiscal year twenty five budgets remain focused on our vision, Kavaiola. To ensure safe water, we will continue to comply with all drinking water regulations, including two new major rule changes related to P F O S and lead and copper. On top of our mandatory compliance, we're working to ensure the Red Hill crisis does not impact our customers through continued testing and the development of monitoring wells to characterize contamination within the aquifer. To ensure dependable water, we will continue our Water Master Plan update in fiscal year twenty five, and this will help to guide the implementation of our high priority projects. And finally, to ensure affordable water, we will continue our strong financial management practices and exercise fiscal prudence. We will also continue to seek sources of funding from the federal and state governments where available. Thank you very much. We're available for any questions.
Thank you, Ray. Members, any questions?
John, Ray, can I ask a question? Can you remind me or go over briefly what the timing of the S R F funds are? And why we couldn't take advantage of them last year?
The S R F funds are, I guess, the Department of Health solicits feedback or projects for their intended use plan about, well, it was actually a couple months ago, yeah, Kaliko, so that they work on an intended use plan every year, the state does. So D O H did that in about March, and that would be for this upcoming fiscal year twenty five. These projects were not identified last March when they were working on their intended use plan for fiscal year twenty four. Because the state has, I guess, the revolving fund, which has its own money, but they're through the B I L. There's also been supplemental funds that come from the federal government, from the E P A down to the S R Fs. So usually work on their intended use plan in this March to May timeframe, and they don't publish or make those intended use plans available until summertime, July or so, and then that is how they intend to spend balance of what they have in their revolving fund plus the any supplements that they're getting from the feds. So yeah, those projects weren't on the intended use plan for last year. We didn't indicate that we needed. If the state desires to use their funding in another way, I believe they have to amend their I U P, but since they're in the process of soliciting for F Y twenty five, we just threw these on to the F Y twenty five intended use plan and with the hopes that they will carve out some S R F funds for these projects.
If I could just add to, earlier this year, the Department of Health issued a press release indicating that they had a large amount of money, over a hundred million dollars of bipartisan infrastructure law or federal funds that could be available to us. So from that press release, we dug down and inquired with them more closely what exactly money was available. Because the bipartisan infrastructure law came out over two years ago. And it was a little unclear what was available to that program. So after reaching out to them after that press release for more information, it became clear that there are some opportunities that are available within a certain timeframe. And that, but those projects had to meet certain criteria. So we looked at projects that met the criteria for that funding. We decided to delay some of our projects that would have gone up this year to be able to tap the funding that's available now. That'll be in next, next year's budget.
Okay, so the S R F funds weren't, we weren't discussing it last year.
We always, we always use S R F funds, but we didn't realize until that press release came out that they indicated they had a large amount of money available. And that's why we explored it. And we're looking for opportunities for projects that meet the criteria, like, for example, projects that are addressing emerging contaminants like P F O S or other contaminants that may not be regulated by the E P A.
I think prior years, on average, we were anywhere from ten to fifteen million in S R F projects. So this hundred and eleven is way more than we have ever requested and that they have had available in S R F.
They would give us an allocation in that range through what they call a programmatic funding approach or ProFi. But it's clear that there is a larger pool of money available, but that is also time constrained. So we have to move quickly.
Have you seen like a similar jump in the other counties in their requests? Are they eligible?
I think anybody is eligible that meets the criteria. I think you have to be a community water system. I'm not sure what the other counties are requesting. Well, one thing with these federal funds, there is a lot of overhead that comes along with it or additional federal requirements to qualify to use the funds and to also ensure that contractor doing the construction work is in compliance with those federal requirements. So I know that we, we have the staff that has the have the capability to do that, even though it will be challenging. The neighbor islands have even smaller staffs. And I'm not sure what they're bad with to meet all those requirements is.
And you can only draw on it on the year, like the fiscal year, or what's the timeline of they have approved with the intended use and we in fact can drop them this money?
Do you expect the loan agreement to close in that? So if you request it, like we requested a hundred and eleven million, they're likely expecting for us to close the loan agreement with them within the next twelve months. Otherwise, if it's further out, they'll encourage you to then put it in an intended use plan in one of those future years because they're looking to close the loans.
And they want to.
That year, yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
And there was no change from the draft, right?
No, there's been no change to the budget since the budget workshop.
I do want to say I appreciate the Department of Health's willingness to work with us and to share information. We, at the same time, also reach out to the E P A to, and are engaged with them to understand how, what are the requirements of the funds, how we can best take advantage of them.
Your staff been pretty, pretty helpful on the ongoing side to make sense of it all.
Yeah, they have been. I know that even for the D O H staff, it has been kind of a learning experience to about the, some of these new fund, federal funds.
Right. There's new pathways for dollars to get them to municipalities.
Yeah, the bipartisan infrastructure law or the Infrastructure Investment Act funding is something that brought a large infusion of capital into these federal programs. Some of them with very specific requirements. At the same time, E P A is passing new drinking water, like P F O S. And in the future, regulations further revising the lead and copper rule. So those will become very challenging for utilities across the country.
Members, any other questions?
Yes, so I just wanted to reiterate my comments during the budget workshop. Really appreciate the department restoring a lot of the funds for the different programs. And really reinvesting, investing, continuing to invest in our most precious resource, which is our people, professional development, recruitment. Those are all things that will keep the agency going for generations to come. And so I just wanted to commend the department on that and also for sticking to our financial guidelines that we set years ago. It was set during a much different economic con, but we've been able to maintain that, which has helped us to maintain our achievement, maintain our triple A bond rating. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Any other questions or comments, members? Great, maybe just one, one question. And then we can move along, you know, and I think you've even really diligent, you have staff and in helping us to understand some of these big jumps. But you know, if you go back to slide number three, right, we see a twelve, almost thirteen percent change in operating budget and a thirty-eight and a half percent jump in C I P. And like just for the sake of clarity here, in this, in this large group gathering that we have, just can you just help us paint the picture of kind of where we've come from with respect to the costs associated with where we were before the increase and kind of where you're, you're heading now? You know, the Brian's good point, keeping us on track with, you know, some of the tasks that that we have in front of us, whether it's C I P or, you know, covering costs.
Yeah, thank you for that question. So yes, this is slide three. The twelve point eight percent does seem like quite a bit. But if we could jump to, actually, I just advanced myself to twelve. So this shows in that stacked bar like how we've been spending over time. So if you look at the twenty one through even twenty four, how flat we've had to keep our budgets. And that was really, we did a rate study back in two thousand sixteen seventeen, adopted rates for the next five years after that. And in that time, though, we had some really dramatic things happen in the world with the global pandemic. There's economic and political instability and wars going on in Europe and the Middle East that has really affected. I had so much ripple effect with inflation. So in this time, we had to really trim in after those post-COVID years or even during COVID. Supply chains were disrupted, made a lot of materials, things that we use in our everyday business, things that, you know, like hydrants, fittings, brass, copper, all of that. Pricing wise went extremely high. I think we looked at, we're comparing solicitations before on even things like hydrants. That went up sometimes as much as double, just buying our everyday things that we need to provide this service. But we were limited to the rates that we set, which are only two to four percent increases over that five-year period. So we had to trim and adjust our spending. So everything considered discretionary had to be or not essentially and immediately needed. Things like equipment had to be deferred. We bought in smaller quantity if that's all we could afford because we couldn't buy at the quantities needed. And we did take more, I guess, as far as filling positions, we had to be more cautious. We always work to fill our positions. We're not trying to not fill them. But we're twenty-five budget is essentially that twelve point eight percent increase. That's us just snapping back, in my opinion, to where we should have been. We couldn't be there in twenty-four. We didn't have the resources or the revenues available to just catch up, work hard to fill all your positions, to have all that money available to buy everything that we need to buy as far as like equipment and material supplies and services. So twenty-five is us putting the budget where it needed to be. Twenty-four and twenty-three reflected us holding it back. So keeping it flat like that was essentially cutting it over the years. Instead of allowing the budgets to grow with the three, four, or when inflation was high, eight to ten percent needed just to maintain our daily services. That's about the ten, fifteen percent budget cuts that we were taking just to keep that budget flat. So twelve point eight percent is just bringing us to filling the positions. We're not asking for new ones. We just need to fill our positions. We need to spend money on things like other contractual services to deal with our, the new rules that are coming out on the water quality side, to deal with Red Hill, to also comply with our regulated dams, keep those, do the groundskeeping work to keep those safe and do inspections and move projects forward on the dam. So yeah, it's, sorry, very long-winded answer, but it, to me, is us snapping back to where we need to be. Now that the rates can support what it takes, we no longer need to cut our budgets. We can just spend what we need to operate.
Thank you. Members, last chance, any other questions? Okay, no further questions?
Just along those lines then, thank you very much to the ratepayers for, you know, bearing the increases and for the most part, being understandable. And everything else going on. So thanks for the ratepayers.
Thank you, Brian. Last chance, any other questions, comments? Okay, I'm closing the full of hearing. We are now in the regular meeting. We have three items on our action agenda today. First item number one.
Sorry, I just want to double check. We don't have any public, no one else has come in, no public testimony for the public hearing.
Thank you for that, Kapua. Check in one last time with Joy.
Chair, there is no public testimony.
We have, we have two pieces, but it looks like it's slated for item for information number one.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to.
Thank you. Thank you, both chair. Appreciate that. Item requiring a board action approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Any discussion? Hearing none, looking for a motion to approve. So move, okay, moved by John, right near second.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Jean. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Say nay. Okay, thank you. Minutes have been approved. Please note for the record. Item for board action. Number two, approval of the minutes of the budget workshop meeting held May sixth, twenty twenty-four. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, can I get a motion to approve? So move, thank you, John. And is there a motion to second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kapua. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. 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 Okay, any opposed, say nay? Hearing none. Minutes of the budget workshop for May sixth, twenty twenty-four have been approved. Please note for the record. Okay. Yeah, okay. Item requiring board action, number three, adoption of resolution. Number nine eighty-five, twenty twenty-four, adopting the operating and capital improvement program budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four and twenty-five and appropriating funds. Therefore, Chair recognizes Rele Nakabayashi.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, members. We recommend the board adopt resolution nine eighty-five, twenty twenty-four, which essentially appropriates our fiscal year twenty-four to twenty-five operating and capital improvement program budget. We just closed the public hearing to consider the proposed budget, which is required by the city charter prior to the board making the appropriation for the budget. There is attached to this letter an affidavit of the notice of public hearing, which ran in the March seven, May seventeenth, star advertiser. As you heard in the presentation, public hearing part, so we're requesting the board appropriate two hundred seventy-two million, six hundred nineteen thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars for, for the operating fund, for the operating budget expenditures, and then a total of three hundred and ten, two hundred ninety-one thousand, three hundred ten million, two hundred ninety-one thousand from various fund sources for the capital improvement program budget. This is the public hearing notice that ran. And this is the resolution itself. So yeah, this is the. So yeah, this is the paragraphs about operating fund appropriation. And the paragraph appropriating the various fund sources for the capital improvement program budget. And the rest of the be it resolved paragraphs are, as the board has seen before, so the manager has authority to adjust the amount of funds, so long as the amount appropriated remains the same. And also, sorry, if we could scroll up just a little bit. This be it further resolved about the expenditure of monies. Oh, sorry, scroll up a little bit further, sorry. Oh, no, oh, sorry. Sorry, this is the be it further resolved that you saw last year about our, essentially about our extramural fund. So when we receive monies whose purpose is limited by the source, so like a federal government grants or a quasi governmental agency giving us funds, we will hold those monies in the extramural fund. And those are the projects identified as extramural in our CIP budget, and we will spend those only for the purpose for which they were authorized or given. And guess it's the, this, if we scroll down a little bit more, this paragraph, oh, sorry. And the board saw this last year too. And luckily for fiscal year twen- well, twenty four hasn't closed yet, but just as we had to appropriate money and we made some strategic decisions to appropriate cash rather than take out more debt financing when the interest rates are high. I think we closed our last bond sale at four point two percent total interest cost. Rather than pay these higher interest rates, we are making the operating fund work as we're getting these new rate revenues. And this budget, as appropriated with the amount of operating funds we expect to receive in revenues, but then how much we're appropriating to be spent, there may be a deviation from the required target of sixty days working capital. If we truly end the budget or the year at the twenty four million I showed as carryover, that may be less than the minimum sixty days. But we do recognize and we're working to rebuild that operating fund balance. And thank you to the board for their support on the rate revenues or the rate increases that have been adopted. And the rest of the be it resolves, you've seen before too, that we will issue revenue bonds as authorized by the board to finance the CIP, and that's for all the projects funded in the improvement fund. And that is all. Thank you for your consideration of the resolution.
To entertain the motion to approve. Moved. Thank you, John. Anyone with a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Brian. It's been moved and seconded. To approve and authorize agenda item number three, adoption of resolution nine eighty five, twenty twenty four, adopting the operating and capital improvement program budget for fiscal year twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. Are there any corrections, additions, amendments or discussion?
I just have a comment, Chair. I really want to, I really want to mahalo our chief engineer and the staff on this process. And when you get our budget book and everything that we're looking at, it's incredibly complex with a lot of numbers and it's super helpful, I think, to have the budget workshop held several weeks ahead of time before the meeting. So we actually have time to go through all the materials, make sure we understand things and follow up if we have any questions, given just the amount of info that there is. So I just wanted to mahalo you folks for that process because it makes it a lot more digestible. Thank you.
Thank you, Kapua. If, if I could echo that, Ernie and Stab and, and the executive support office, it's just tremendous job. I mean, especially because it has not been business as usual the last several years and, and trying to find the different ways to cut here and trim there to make sure that the, the lights literally stay on is, is much appreciated. And just want to acknowledge the, the monitor for that goes into this to make sure that everyone has a, has an understanding of all the different ways that we're getting money now, you know, the debt service and the like. So thank you so much for, you know, providing it in a way that we can, we can take it all in, comprehend it and, and be able to, you know, make appropriate decisions on half a billion plus dollars. So thank you.
Good job, Brian, contract.
Yeah, thank you. Any further discussion, members? Okay, this has been moved and seconded, so there is no further discussion. Roll call vote, please, Madam Secretary.
Please, Chair, please, Chair, propose, bro.
Aye.
For member Brian and Diane.
Aye, and for the record, I don't think I got to make a disclosure earlier. I am at home by my school.
Thank you, Brian. I was, I meant to ask you about that. Let the record show Brian's sign on at about two ten, when we were in the, the first, the first part of our public hearing. Thank you.
Member Jonathan Hachero.
Aye.
For member Gino Bono.
Aye.
Chair Nalikhu Anthony.
Aye.
Chair, motion passes with five ayes.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're moving on to items for information. Item number one, and Joy, if I forget, please remind me if there's testimony for this one, yeah? Yeah, this is item information number one, update on the border water suppliers' response to the potential impact of Red Hill field contamination. Chair recognizes Joyce Lynn. Hello, Joyce.
Chair. Good afternoon, Chair and board members. This is your May twenty twenty four Red Hill update. So this past month, we had lots of Navy technical memos that were released regarding the low detections of TPH or total petroleum hydrocarbons in the drinking water system of Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam. The Navy stood on their conclusion that it was due to testing methods used and the interference of chlorine in the drinking water samples. Even underlines of questioning during our May seventh meeting with them, the Navy said that their samples and test results are valid despite the testing method used were incorrect. Following these release, the, of the technical memo, Border Water Supply sent a letter to the Secretary of Defense, the Honorable Lord Austin, requesting for additional information, including an unredacted copy of the memo that shows all the figures, tables, appendices, also information on the hydraulic model used to simulate water flow within their water system, and complete data packages of the laboratory reports and the raw data used to generate chromatography diagrams that were shown on the report. Another technical memo release really revealed that the Navy and the Department of Independence collected water samples from the Joint Base Pearl Harbor system following the fuel release on November twenty, November twentieth, twenty twenty one. DOH's results show detections of petroleum product within various locations of Red Hill and Red Hill Shaft. However, these data was determined not appropriate for use to evaluate human exposure to JP five fuel in the drinking water system at Joint Base Pearl Harbor because the timeline of which the Red Hill Shaft was taken offline versus when the samples were taken were misaligned. They stated that the location of the samples were taken were unreliable and that there were concerns on whether all the samples were using correct methods. With the large amount of information released in such a short time, our border water staff and technical teams of subject matter expert are still working on fully understanding and digesting the documents. And we're still doing our technical review on them. And just following up on one, on last month's mention of the House Bill twenty six ninety, unfortunately, the measure did not make it out of the committee this year. As mentioned last board meeting, the purpose and intent of this measure is to make changes to the management structure, responsibility and funding of the Commission on Water Resources Management to support the state's water, state's water management and water remediation efforts, such as establishing the position of a Red Hill V coordinator, as well as a Red Hill remediation special fund. The bill is, the bill may be introduced next calendar year in twenty twenty five. So the first federal trial between the affected families of Red Hill, of the Red Hills bill on November twentieth, twenty twenty one, and the US Navy began on April twenty ninth and concluded on May thirteen. The affected families were able to share their stories of physical and mental damages that incident caused them and are seeking monetary compensation from the federal government. This was a judge trial with ruling expected sometime in July. Also, the Community Representation Initiative members held their eighth meeting on May sixteen with both the EPA and Navy absent again. The reason of their absence was that the CRI members were unable to come to terms with the mediation, mediation conditions set forth by the EPA and Navy. And the conditions included non-disclosure of discussions during these close door meetings. The CRI group was established by the latest twenty twenty three consent order that was signed by, signed off by the EPA and Navy as a means to include public engagement throughout the defueling and closure of Red Hill. So unfortunately, it seems that the CRI are now sort of shunted aside because of the unfavorable discussions on the Navy and EPA's part during the monthly public meetings that has been held. It was quite disappointing seeing and watching and listening to the CRI meetings with ten teachers from the Navy and EPA. But this past meeting, DOH representatives were at, were there during the meeting. However, they couldn't really elaborate on the new technical memos and results. They only were able to comment broadly in general manners. We are finishing up and finalizing a letter to the Department of Defense, Secretary of Defense, the Honorable Lord Austin, and to the Defense Logistics Agency and EPA, asking them to reevaluate their actions, to urge them to be more, reevaluate their methods in terms of the public engagements. The Navy Closure Task Force held an open house on May fifteen to showcase their latest updates. Unfortunately, there weren't any new information. The Navy Task Force is still working on setting up and preparing work to remove the sledge at the bottom of the fuel tanks and are installing air monitors in preparation to ventilate the tanks before they could pressure wash them. Another item to note is that the groundwater pumping of Red Hill Shaft was reduced on April twenty ninth from four point two million gallons per day to one point eight million gallons per day. In the coming months, we look forward to more closure updates from the Navy and we will present that, update the board as information presents them. I am available for any questions. Thank you.
Members, any questions?
I just, not a member, but I think you say, Chair, I just want to thank the Chair for attending our meetings also with, with the Navy and the information sharing forum. We are, like Joyce said, we are looking and doing a review of the, of the tech memo and haven't come out with any findings yet. But the Department of Health, I think Joyce, you mentioned, the Department of Health also issued their findings or their, their report on the tech memo from, from the Navy just recently, I think last, last week. So we'll, we'll see when we come out with our evaluation, we can brief the board at that time on our, what we think our findings are.
Yeah, if I could just add, I mean, I think the, you know, the kind of specificity that we're seeing in this low level TPH investigation is really indicative of the, the kind of work that the Navy has been doing and the, the ways in which they've been describing some of the anomalies that they've seen and that, you know, for, for me, I think, you know, as, as the board, we want to learn as much as we possibly can about what happened from the, you know, the, the event in twenty one all the way till today, to just get a better understanding of, you know, what happens when you see this kind of intrusion into into a water system. But also too, that we have many, many more years of monitoring to go. And I just, as a, you know, leadership and for the border water supply, just want to make sure that we have access to, you know, the right kind of data presented the right way so that we can make the kind of decisions for our water supply with our eyes wide open to, to some of this, because there are, you know, obviously, you know, huge pressures for, you know, to make sure that we can meet our charter, but also to do it in a, in a safe way, where we have a better understanding of the science and the hydrology in the area. So, you know, the, 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 the last two or three months of investigations and reports and reporting and, and the regulators weighing in are, I think, are super important to the trajectory of where we're going in the future for, you know, how we, how we as a user of the offer can maintain safe water for our customers.
I, I totally agree. One of the issues, I think, we, we, in our letter that we'll be sending out shortly, basically expressing concern about the, the limitations maybe placed on the, on the Community Representation Initiative or CRI process. It's very disturbing to see that. We want the, there is actually a, a even greater need now for greater transparency on the part of the military and the regulators to be very transparent on everything they found, also the experiences of the Red Hill facility of where it's eighty year history. That information, there's no reason to keep it confidential or not, to not share it. So the, the other issue too is the, I continue to press on the, the Navy and, and the regulators to require PFOS testing on a regular basis from all monitoring locations, including the two water sources that are shut down right now, Red Hill Shaft and Holava, their IAF Holava Shaft. And that's something I just recently expressed to the governor and, and hopefully the Department of Health will step forward to leverage the requirement and make it a, not a option or request, but a requirement of our, of the Navy.
Absolutely. So, you know, just, just to recap a little bit for members and those of you in the audience, I think, not only is this like a really timely place, space to be paying attention to what's going on with testing, but on the, on the legislative side, you know, we're trying to move forward with a robust plan with the Red Hill V Group in and around monitoring and remediation. Joyce did mention that twenty six ninety did not make it out of committee and therefore died, but there are placement in the budget for both some, some programmatic dollars as well as for, I think, three warm bodies over at DLR to help to start to stand this up. So it's not everything we wanted, but the fact that the state committed some dollars to it is a step in the right direction. And this is really, I think, for us here on, on this end of the spectrum, wanting to make sure that we do have, while, while people's minds are still, and, you know, pointed towards this subject that we have some movement on remediation and monitoring into the future. So hopefully this starts the conversation with the feds to be able to get a hold of some dollars, some cyclical dollars to help pay for that. You know, it's noted as well that, you know, the budget represents a whole lot more testing on our, than like five million dollars more than we, we had budgeted in the past because of the, of the sheer volume of testing that we have to do, that only gets larger rate as we put more holes in the ground to, to monitoring. So I'm gonna get all that covered.
Thank you.
Yeah. Are, are there any other comments or questions? Do you have your hand up there, Kapua?
I do. I just wanted to follow up on House Bill twenty six ninety. I know there was a tremendous amount of disappointment that, that initiative wasn't passed and for, and I think concerning confusion amongst folks in the community about what the next steps are. I think your update was really helpful, Chair. For folks who are interested and want to support, kind of what's the best way that community members can engage? Is it to wait until the V initiative has staffing in place? Is it to, I know there's been concern too in the community about, you know, does more of an effort need to be made to get ready for next session? Kind of what can people do to help around that?
Yeah, that's a great question, Vice Chair. I think there's probably like a couple of things that are important to note. I mean, the first, first is that, you know, we acknowledge that there's all kinds of competing things that are challenging our state right now. And, you know, Lahaina is a really important piece of the puzzle and, and how we. And, you know, Lahaina is a really important piece of the puzzle and how we respond to the crisis there. But Red Hill is a clear and present crisis as well. And so, you know, we're thankful for all of the community partners that have come in to support these efforts. And you were right, that twenty-six ninety had a ton of people show up. I mean, you know, you and I were down there multiple days trying to, trying to help to figure this out. And I think the next step is to look at how the, and if there's any movement federally to help to pay for some of this. There are pots of dollars that are being looked at that are pre-existing, that have been part of the response to Red Hill. And, you know, I mean, right, if you line all the things up, it's like, you know, the Navy, the Navy has admitted that it's their fault. We know that there's jet fuel in the aquifer. You know, Halava Shaft is shut off. And I think looking at the Red Hill VY sensibility of the report, it really solves a number of challenges for everybody involved, the military, the city, the state. When we're looking at a robust plan that has, you know, a couple of hundred or more than a hundred monitoring wells and all that. But all of that to say is that it's very expensive and we don't believe that the repairs should be paying for it. And so this next step of wanting to make sure that, you know, we get some help from the Codell to pay for it, I think is probably the next piece to be staying tuned for. And again, for those of you who are monitoring this, I think there's, all the community partners will be on it to help kind of set the drumbeat for, for action as it's needed.
Thank you so much for that. I have one more question, if we have time, just a follow-up. And I don't know whether this is for Ernie or Erwin, but I just wanted to follow up on the reduced groundwater pumping from the Red Hill Shaft. That's a significant drop by more than half. And I know there's been folks on both sides about whether or not that's how that impacts the community. And so I just wanted to ask if you guys could provide a little bit more information on, on that particular point.
Well, the, the effectiveness of what they were doing, which I think is, was encouraged by the Department of Health. It's kind of been questionable in the discussions with the different subject matter experts, both from the EPA, Department of Health, the Navy and ourselves, whether or not a pumping Red Hill Shaft. The Red Hill Shaft is a long tunnel about over, a little over a thousand feet long that skims the top of the aquifer there, top of the water table and then pumps it out at one end. Whether or not that was effectively, would have captured any fuel releases from the Red Hill Field Tanks or the release back in twenty-twenty-one. So that, that has been the question. Do you waste over four, four million gallons a day of, of freshwater and pump it into a Halava Stream? Or for something that maybe is not quite effective? So I don't know. I, I think reducing it and monitoring the situation is important. But the, yeah, I, I don't know if the shaft was going to be a good way to capture fuel releases from the Red Hill. Especially since I think Susan's going to be talking about some of the monitor data that you can see actually contamination, monitor wells at different locations away from Red Hill Shaft too. And again, into the Halava Valley. And some of those levels never go down. They stay pretty high. So, so that, that's the, that's the whole question. That's the problem with the complexity of the geology of Red Hill, which is not uniform or what they call homogeneous. It's highly variable. Halava Shaft, I mean, Red Hill Shaft, not, maybe it's not the best way to capture contaminants.
Thank you for that, Ernie. I just wanted to clarify that because I think it is confusing for some folks who might look at this as, oh, no, but not realizing that, for example, we don't know whether the fuels are sinking and so they're not necessarily, they're not sitting on the surface, but are other parts of the water.
Are moving deeper in the aquifer because there's a preferential path of, for that fuel to flow with the groundwater based on the layering of the lava flows over time.
If I could just add, I mean, this has been like very concerning to me over the course of the couple of years that they've been pumping this. Because they're seeing themselves right there finding like a tablespoon of oil over the course of, you know, every month or, or whatever the interval is. And that when we saw that heat map in, what was that, like February of twenty-one, the one where, where it was, it was around the monitoring wells up at Red Hill and that, it was clear that this stuff had dispersed very quickly. And that, that this was right, this four point six or eight million gallons was like, was meant to like hold the capture zone in place. It was like, you know, trying to pull gravity, which in and of itself means that there's a recognition that the water moves. Right? Like the, the water is going to move around. And I think, you know, for the most part, they just missed it, which is, which is why we saw that plume at the other monitoring wells, to Ernie's point. And then why it's so critical that we have more monitoring wells further out in this network between Red Hill and Halava to just better understand what's going on in the region is it moved somewhere, we just don't know where it went.
Which again only, I'm sorry, Ernie. I was gonna say which again only reinforces the importance of further dispersed monitoring walls. And so we really hope we'll be able to count on more support from our congressional delegation so that it's not just the repairs paying to attract this plume that was created by the Navy.
So the Navy's pumping at a reduced rate out of their Red Hill Shaft. Right now pumping it through GAC units and activated carbon contactors and then discharging to Halava Stream. If this is going to continue, and it's now like been probably approaching two years that they've been pumping to, to waste into Halava Stream. On-site, on-base reuse of this water rather than just letting it go to waste. Especially they've got multiple golf courses on the, on the military base there that they could have used this water to supply those golf courses. I know they are talking about trying, working to put a water treatment system in so that they can now treat the water, then pump it back into the water system from Dry Base Pearl Harbor Hickam. But if that's still a few years away, a few years from now, they should really be thinking about reuse of this water rather than letting it go to waste. They have indicated to us and briefed us that they're going to take some of that water, a small amount, and use it to help clean those, the sludge out of fourteen tanks. But when I look at their reports, I think they only need about a half a million gallons to do that. Of water to do that. When they are doing the pressure washing of each, each of the insides of the fourteen tanks. But right now, every day, over one point three million gallons is being pumped out and wasted. So they really should look at a way to reuse it, maybe piping it down through the tunnel, lower access tunnel all the way to Pearl Harbor and use it to, in the shipyard or on base for irrigation and other, other uses.
Along, along that, that line, Ernie, I had Sunny Mago by today that it looks like they're starting, the Navy's starting the process to do the environmental assessment for the, I think, the more permanent Red Hill Water Treatment Facility. So there, I'll forward this to you later, Vice Chair, but there's a, there's a, I guess, a thirty-day period for, for people to go ahead and send written comments in. But this is about this more permanent site that they want to, they want to build out and figure out what they're going to do with the water. So I mean, it sounds like they're going to put it back into the system, right?
Yeah, and drink it.
And drink it. Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I think the regulators have also reminded them they need to install treatment systems for PFOS removal because their baseline testing from last year indicated a much more widespread occurrence of PFOS in the groundwater around the Red Hill Facility.
And, Ernie, I'm not trying to put you on the spot here with the, there were the documents that Joyce brought up that are really important memos, but that this border water, back and forth with DOH. Specifically, I guess DOH is sending the, the press release out about what their view of the technical memo was that the Navy had sent. I'd be really curious to get staff's interpretation of that at the next meeting to just understand what they're saying. It wasn't clear to me. I only read regular English, not engineer English. So I, I need a translator, but I think it's really important that we get clarity as to where they are. The regulator is with the Navy's response to how it is that they have contextualized the low-level TPH.
Thank you, Chair. We'll take a look at the Department of Health's report on the tech memo issued by the Navy and be able to report back to the board next month.
Thank you.
And Chair, just to follow up on that, I think once we have the info on the environmental review process, it would be helpful to share it on the, our website. I know a lot of people are relying on, on the board to, to be able to get information to engage in the processes. And since this is going to affect so many people, I think it would be great to have as many people share their mona- early on as possible.
Yeah, absolutely. Make another, we'll talk to Kathleen folks about that. Thank you for the reminder. I, I mean, you know, just in the testimony that was submitted today, there's questions specific to some of these things that are occurring. So, you know, it is on top of mind for folks who've been tracking this. And, and it's important that we get some feedback from, you know, the varying sources so that people can figure out kind of where everyone is landing with this stuff. Okay, I do believe we have testimony this afternoon, both in person and online.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to start with in person?
Sounds good to me.
Chair recognizes our good friend, Susan Piccola Davis. Sorry, my dear. I know it's been a longer meeting than we would normally see, but I appreciate everyone's patience in this. We do have a, a long agenda, but I did see that she brought the best in this back case.
Yeah, I finally got it through. Thanks to your secretary and everybody in the background. So this is a presentation I did for the last CRI. And so that was my first try at this. And so I started with them to try and get them to understand, oh, monitoring wells. I've switched from drinking water to monitoring wells until they figure out what they're doing as far as the TPH measurements. So I figured, okay, let's just move on to the groundwater monitoring wells. So what I did was I did a flow chart and I tried to make it as simple as possible so that they could understand the wells, the plume wells and the central monitor, monitoring wells and how they are checking, giving us information on the aquifer that provides the water to the Red Hill Drinking Water Shaft. And then, of course, you can see the arrows. It just goes, the water ends up going to the Red Hill Shaft. And this is where they get their water to drink from. One of the things, because I went to the trial, the shaft wasn't turned off until November twenty-ninth. So there were days, twentieth to twenty-first, fresh fuel was still flowing until they figured out first how to stop it from flowing. And then I guess the Department of Health let them know that they needed to shut the shaft down. But in addition to that, the Halava I A well was still flowing. So there was still some kind of contamination going or flushing through the system and going into the homes, which left Waiva Shaft as the only supply. And I think that we should realize that just because both shafts were closed, the water had already reached the water system. And the tech memo, when I, when I read the first part of it, or it may have been at the F-TAC, the Navy saying that the water always, it was Chris Waldron, says the water always flows downhill and was kind of disagreeing with Pearl City Peninsula getting contaminated and Ford Island. But as Ernie just said, it's the geology, it's not the gravity. Okay, so it's very important to understand that in Hawaii, we don't know what's all under there. But if it's going downhill and something blocks it, the water is going to find a way to go however it's going to go. That's about the easiest way I can explain it. So the first thing I did was I looked at the four wells, which is on page, the second page. They're the four, four wells that were coming up in twenty-twenty-one with the most exceedances. So I didn't even bother with detections because it was all over the place. I mean, detections were everywhere. So W zero one R, you can see between October twenty-one and December twenty-one, they were getting regular, regular shots of diesel and oil range. And because they're monitoring wells, their limits for diesel is four hundred parts per billion and oil is five hundred parts per billion. So we're not looking at the two six, but these are still exceedances based on the Department of Health. Now, we've already, I think we've talked about W O two and it's always been a problem. And I have to say, I'm not accepting that it's always been a problem. It's always needed to have something done. So if you see on the upper right, there's three chemicals that were exceedances during this time. And I've also put their limits up there as ten parts per billion, ten parts per billion and seventeen parts per billion. I know it's tiny, but I hope you got color, color prints. But if you look at May tenth through May thirty-first, you're going to see these combinations going on in addition to diesel. Okay, that was like around the May spill and then you move down to November. But all throughout that time, you're seeing these combinations. So I've moved from diesel and oil because I think I've exhausted that to a certain point, to start looking at combinations of chemicals at the same time. And look at some of the health effects from these chemicals, but I'm not going to do that today. I'm just letting you know that now we're seeing, this is still twenty-twenty-one and we see these combinations also. So whether it was jet fuel or TPHD or TPHO, ignoring the combinations is ignoring something that could be really relative. And W O three is the next page and you can see again that there's oil and diesel. But then there's this period of time where there's nothing. So I suspect that they just didn't test because I don't know the truth. The next one is twenty-two fifty-four. And at the CRI, I forgot to bring this one up, but on twelve eight twenty-twenty-one, and that number is not wrong, fourteen thousand two hundred parts per billion for diesel. So that's floating right around the same time limit as the well gets shut down and the testing starts going on. But there's also these other combination of chemicals that I just want to, everybody to understand that it may look like just a teeny tiny thing. For instance, benzoin thricine is supposed to be point zero two nine parts per billion. And right around January twenty-twenty-two is zero point one. So you go, well, Susan, what does that mean? That it's still a combination of chemicals and I'm not a chemist. So I'm just pointing it out that it's there. Okay? So now we go to two thousand twenty-two. And maybe later on, it's the same, it's the same wells. But maybe later on, if you have a hard, hard copy, you can take the twenty-twenty-one and overlay it over the twenty-twenty-two. I decided not to do that because I kind of already know. So when I have this circle saying, what's this about? I'm thinking that they're not testing, but then this benzo comes up at zero point, point zero seven nine. So. I don't know, but all of these are still exceedances and we're in. Twenty twenty two and the date range is all the way up to twenty twenty four. That's all that this one had.
Here's the.
Just a stop here right there. This big puka. Is there any data? Not there. Can we send the letter and ask? Ernie?
Yeah.
Because remember, I'm just using their website.
Yeah. Send a letter and ask to see if they were testing or whether, whether they went. Another, there were um. Other, other times when we thought it was just late, but I don't know that we followed back up. Where there was like a long lag, it was like six months worth of lag and the testing data hadn't come in. Can we?
You'll find one, it's a couple of pages.
Then. Even these, these dates don't line up perfectly either from monitoring wall one to monitoring wall three. A little different, anyway.
Yeah, that's because of the way their data is put into their database. So I couldn't get the exact same date.
Right.
What is that interval for each well? I could only take what they gave me. So now we're on W O two. And this goes all the way to April first twenty twenty four. That's the last um bunch of boxes. I know it's tiny. I know you need a magnifying glass, but. I'm just going to repeat that there's things going on in these wells after. I mean, in this will, well, in particular, this after. Things have been shut down, right? The wells have been shut down. So my question mark right there is, where's that information? Did they just stop testing? I'm showing you the combinations. It's real strange that after the question mark, you do not see any more diesel. Or, I mean, TPH oil, the red blocks of oil, okay? So that was my little pattern question. And then all, then after um in July-ish, we just start seeing diesel in. This particular well. Which I've heard is the well that's always been a problem. So now we're in twenty twenty two again, and here's that same well you asked me about before. Monitoring well three, and you can see that big. Part that doesn't have any data. And then as you're moving down. Consider twenty twenty three, you start seeing these combinations coming up again. And the last one. Yes. Twenty two twenty four. Combinations up, up front in the left and then nothing. And then we see sporadic detections of oil. And I found one plume well that had an exceedance. It was O four B on the February fourteenth twenty twenty four. And you can see that diesel was eleven seventy. And the oil was seven seventy seven. And in the presentation today, the map that. She gave has all the, all of the um P wells on it now. So then you can start looking at its location as far as. How they're located to these wells that I just presented. And the question is, when are we going to get? Any of the maps? I'm going to stop there because. Need some water. I'm stopping for questions. And then I've got a few more things.
Members, any questions?
Okay, so there's supposedly from the earlier presentation that there's a subject matter expert meeting coming up. And my question is, when is it and is the public? Okay to attend it, but you don't have to answer that right now.
I can answer. I uh, I know that the uh. There's a date that they're looking at for a subject matter expert meeting, SME. Uh, this is a remediation roundtable meeting. Uh. And then question whether or not the public is invited, I, I. Think the. The regulators have indicated it's not open to the public. Uh, and that's a point that I made when they invited us to participate in those discussions from the very first meeting. How do you engage? How do you plan on engaging the community? Uh, uh, in this process? And this is the remediation roundtable. Let's figure out the roadmap on how we approach uh. Uh, characterization, investigations and, and possibly remediate. Uh, so, well, Susan, that's a question, that's a valid question of why there's. No transparency on that process with the public.
Okay, so let's leave that meeting. Uh. DOA, uh, Border Water Supply, I assume. It was the chair, went to, met with the closure team, and then they also went to the Navy Info Sharing Forum. And I'm just wondering, well, I'm not going to ask if they're NDAs, but if they, if we can get little. Maybe two or three bullet points that she can present in our Red Hill update. That maybe we could just get a sense of what went on.
So I can answer. Uh, none of us are under NDA. That's why we're seeing the exact good stuff. So none of us is sending NDA.
Okay.
Uh, we're trying to work through, um, and actually the questions closed in the testimony that came over. The same questions we've asked that I think staff are going to try to take a swing at some of these um in the next uh testimony. Um, or, or provide written answers. Um. Later, but those are the same questions that we've been asking and some of the material is not available to us as of yet, but we have made the request. That was Joyce said and made the um. Made the comment about the letter that went over to Sec Navy that was for those, basically those items. So we can talk about that in a couple of minutes when Meredith gets on. Um, but that's, you're, you're tracking, we're all tracking in the same direction.
Okay, so the um bullet points that I can give you from the. Results of the Department of Health forensic investigation, just two really. The Department of Health disagrees with the Navy's conclusion that certain drinking water zones. Could not have been contaminated by the Red Hill shaft during November twenty twenty one emergency. The Navy should continue to respond to complaints from zones served by its drinking water. So that was my little spiel about water, gravity doesn't dictate where the water is going to go. And uh. The DOH. Does not agree or does not, how do you say it? Their conclusion that there is no residual fuel for the entire base cannot be made. So that's the uh statement by the Department of Health, just a short statement. Because I was reading this while y'all were talking. And the rest of it, you guys are going to present. Um, at the next meeting. And if you talk to any of the Navy people, where do we find the data on the Halava stream testing?
Well, I'll get you an answer.
Because I don't know how to find it, but I've been curious these past two and a half.
You're talking about the, the metering at the GAK?
Yeah, like before, there's supposed to test and then after, yeah. Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you. You. Do we have uh online? I'm waiting.
Yes, Chair, we have Meredith. We're waiting online.
Okay, um. Let's get, let's get Meredith on the line here.
Hit them.
Okay, Meredith, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, aloha. Thanks for being patient with us today.
Yeah, no worries. I have been practicing patience for the past two years. Um, I'm surprised I still have any.
Good answer.
Um. But uh, first off, I want to appreciate you guys for um, and especially Mr. Kowada for answering my last month's questions. I can't always be here, but. You answered my written questions, so I really appreciate that. Uh, just as a follow up, have, has BWS finalized comments on the Department of Health's updated environmental hazard evaluation guidance? I guess I'll pause if anybody knows.
Hi, Meredith, just a Darwin. Uh, yes, the answer is yes. We have reviewed Department of Health revised or updated uh. Environmental action limits. We did prepare comments to Department of Health.
Okay.
We can make that, we'll make that available and put that on our website.
Thank you. I just like seeing what you guys think because um you're the actual professionals here and we are just on the side, uh. On the side, trying to figure it out. So thank you. Um, most of my questions and comments are regarding the tech memo by the swarm Navy swarm team. Um, and I think that sometimes people may think from the outside, why talk about the Navy's water system so much, but it's also interconnected. And for us to figure it out now, um, really informs the future. Um, so first of all, why wasn't BWS included on that swarm team? I think that anyone following the history and ongoing issues around a hill know that it's your institution is one of the most trusted. And so for all of you not to be invited to the table as the local experts is yet again a failure to rebuild the trust they so desire. Did DOH ask for your input at all since they were involved?
Uh, simple answer is no. Uh, we were not invited and uh we're, they did not ask for our input. Uh, because this uh, this, the Navy's water system is. Uh, the responsibility of the Navy and it's regulated by the Department of Health and EPA. Uh, and Border Water Supply doesn't have any regulatory authority. Uh, nobody invited us to those discussions.
I, I can understand that. Um, but I also understand that you're the most informed and have the best history of the hydrogeology. Um, so anyway, that's just my personal opinion. Um.
Well, thank, thank you, Meredith. I, I, I don't think they always agree with our, our, our opinions.
Um, yeah, agreed. Um, secondly, the main takeaway from the four hundred and thirty page plus memo. Um. Is that they believe these halogenated byproducts are appearing as hydrocarbons when they're testing our drinking water. And it's being created from free chlorine plus the lab reagent that they're using, which is called O terra phenyl. If that makes any sense to you guys. Um, can you confirm that such chlorinated compounds would be detected? In the labs with the TPH method? First of all, that's my question, if anybody can answer.
Uh, I'll ask her to answer the question, but I also want to be careful too, Meredith, that we're doing our own review. Uh.
I'll be like.
We have not completed that process. So just want to be careful that uh that's made clear.
Understood.
Hi, Mer- hi, Meredith. Uh, so right now we are doing a peer review on the, the Navy's um technical memo. Uh, that discusses their uh TPH detections that they're finding. Uh, so when we are finished with that technical review, we can make that available, yeah, findings available.
Understood. It took me several days to get through it and I don't even know what most of it is. I'm just doing a lot of uh research if I can. Um. I just.
It's just, you're very, it's impressive what you're doing.
Well, I think, I think, I think, um. I think it's, it goes without saying that when something happens to you, you really want to understand it and avoid it for other people. Um. I just want to remind the public and the board specifically about chlorine. Um, the April twenty twenty two EPA inspection of the Joint Base's Public Water System said, quote. Their standard operating procedure does not give operators specific instructions on replenishing chlorine and fluoride. The public water system operators stated that supervisors give verbal instructions on when and how to replenish. Chlorine and fluoride. So if that doesn't tell you that they may have some potential issues with disinfection, um, I don't know what will. So I do want that to be remembered and I'll try to hurry up. Um, I'm, that my third question had to deal with the tracer study that was um used to make some conclusions. In the tech memo. Um, and I'm really glad that you guys are requesting more of that information. Um, because. You know, it said that five designated zones likely receive zero percent of the contaminated water from Red Hill Shaft. And it just yet again divides reality because I know people that lived in those zones and their health was highly impacted. Um, so I'm, I'm looking forward to getting your hands on that too. Um, lastly, would any ta- testing for TPH? Um, or fuel related degradation products on the joint basis wastewater be indicative of the drinking water status? Um, I know that the TPH method is not meant for drinking water, so. Could wastewater testing be informative of what the users on the system are exposed to?
I don't know the answer to that question, Erin. Do you? Want to take a stab at that? Uh, yeah, are you uh implying maybe what the experience with the pandemic and COVID? And testing wastewater to be an indirect indicator?
Yeah, that, that same uh line of thinking is, is kind of where I was coming from.
Uh, Ferring?
Yeah, Meredith, uh, testing the wastewater is going to be a little bit more difficult because. Um, everything goes down, down the drain, right? So you're washing your dishes, things of that sort. So anything from there, like. You know, you're washing your dishes and any oils used, that could have some impact and interfere with the test. Testing the wastewater is going to be a, a little bit more difficult and more problematic.
Okay, yeah, more complicated.
Yeah, more complicated, but perspective your question, you know, we know that the, the water source, the Navy Red Hill Shaft was exposed to a fuel release. So testing for fuels in the drinking water makes sense, yeah? And the Navy's thought that, you know, the test method um that was used. They're saying that it's not a drinking water test methods. You need to kind of remember that that method was actually prescribed by the regulatory agencies to be used.
Yep.
Number one, yeah? Second of all, we also use that method. It is not a drinking water method and that's why we test the method out first. On actual drinking water samples on our condition before we actually take it to a live or in real life, real term. Uh, water samples from our water system. And we make sure that all of the. Analysis and all of the quality controls meet the method specifications before we actually do it on real time samples. So whether or not the Navy did that is something that hopefully the technical memo will. Provide some, you know, some light into whether they did that or not. Okay.
Thank you very much. Um, I just wish the best of luck to BWS in your legal endeavor specifically. Um, to recoup all the losses you've sustained. I know that's a, a tall wish. Um, but although we, we can't, we'll never all give back our time, our peace, or for some of us, our, our health. But mahalo for all you guys do to um safeguard such a precious part of our life, clean water. Allah ikabai.
Thank you, Meredith, and um, best to you and your family, your ohana and to you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Members, any questions? Meredith, thank you so much for making the time for us today and uh for the. Uh, the good question set. These are questions that we are looking at as well. Thank you. Um, Madam Secretary, check in and are there any other testimony submitted today?
No, Chair, there is no other testifiers online or in person.
Okay. We're going to move on to item for information. Number two, status update of groundwater levels at all index stations. Chair recognizes very well.
Thank you, Chair. And uh. Board members, uh, for uh. For the, for the month of April, five aquifer index stations in low groundwater condition. Uh, there are Kamaki, Pro City, Waipahu, Poraloo and Waialua. In caution. Uh, nothing and alert. The monthly production was uh for April was a hundred and thirty two. And a half, anything else per day. Uh, the rainfall index in April was a hundred and eighty two percent of normal. So, so good rains at the end of April and they, they folded into May, so expect May to be, be high as well. Up to our five month moving average to a hundred and ten percent, hundred and one percent, excuse me. Um, the drought monitor still is looking at uh below normal precipitation. At least through July, the, the last uh drought council. Meeting in National Weather Service reported that uh. The El Nino is moving out and Alaniña is coming in, so that result. So that result, they'd be forecasting that the summer months, the dry summer will appear earlier. There'll be less tropical cycles and then possibly a more normal rainfall winter. Our monitor wells exhibited stable slightly decreasing head levels, reflecting lower production. But then, yeah, we did have some more rainfall in the last couple of months. And then the average month of production, monthly production for April is a little bit higher than the same time last year in 2023, slightly higher than the five year monthly average. And we are still increasing. We want to increase our conservation messaging through the summer. We looked at the trends in groundwater, but we're still analyzing that. So be able to report that in future board meetings. But the rainfall, if you get to the they can see the 182% in April, which is a good thing. Again, May should be similar. And then the production yeah, still above the five month and, and last year. And that's my report. Available for any questions.
Members, any questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Moving on to item for information number three, water main repair report for April 2024. Jason?
Before Jason starts, I just want to announce to the board too, that this will be Jason's last report to the board. And the reason for that is he's moving on to a position elsewhere. We're going to miss him very much and he's done a great job all here at Board of Water Supply. So Jason, please proceed with your, your report.
We have like subpoena powers. Can we like force him to come back?
I, I don't know if we have that.
It will be in good hands. Following is the water main repair report for April. In April, we had 28 main breaks. Which brings us to a total of 352 for the fiscal year to date. That is equivalent to all of the previous fiscal year with two months remaining. So this fiscal year will be a, a higher than normal year. Of the 28 main breaks, 17 were considered leaks and 11 were considered breaks. There's a list of 28 main breaks all on smaller diameter pipes. For leak detection, our leak detection team investigated 79 points of interest and found 56 leaks. So those 56 leaks takes us to 675 leaks found to date for the fiscal year. And we're on pace to have most leaks found in a fiscal year. Of the 56 leaks found in April, two were on mains, 42 were in the meter box on couplings. Five were on the customer side and seven were service leaks. To date, the detection has found 63 leaks on main lines. Are there any questions to the report?
Members, any questions?
No questions for the report, but just wanted to thank Jason for his service and all of that. I really appreciate the way you reworked and revamped the report format. That's super helpful. So mahalo, we'll miss you.
Thank you.
Jason.
I want to echo that too, Jason. You know, it's been many years you were giving the report and we're certainly going to miss you. You're supposed to wait until I turn off. But good luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Always an opportunity to come back as a board member, Jason. You have a, a lot of technical knowledge. It would be useful at the board level as well. So, you know, you can think about it as you move on to other tasks. We do appreciate all of your, your hard work and thank you so much for keeping us updated month in, month out. Whoever does take on your duties, make sure that, you know, when they bring the show and tell of the cut out of the pipe, you get extra credit. So.
In the interim, while we're looking for a permanent replacement of Wayne Tell, who's sitting in the corner with TA to the programming administrator and then assistant Henry Glenn on the the gentleman with the hat.
Okay. He is testifying today.
So between Wayne and Glenn will have over 80 years of experience in, in field. So field will be in good hands.
Thank you, Jason. That's a, that's a nice way of putting it as you. Any other questions? Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
This also brings us to the end of our regular board agenda today. We have some items to discuss in executive session. Yeah, how do I do this if I want to like take a break and get us out of the regular meeting? Do I gotta, do I have to, do we have to take a break and then go to executive or can we do it at the same time?
I think you can recess the regular meeting and reconvene the executive session.
All right, we want to do that. We want to resource, recess the regular meeting to go into executive session. Please have a motion to move into executive session. So move, thank you, John. Moved and second please. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Okay, we're now in executive session. Adjournment has been moved by Jonathan Konashiro. Can someone second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. It's been seconded by Brian Andaya. All those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right, we stand in adjournment.